Alright, so we are going to call the meeting to order at six thirty. We're going to start with a roll call. Mary Ducevsky. Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Carrie Farina. Uh, Gabe. Gabe Morris, Stephen. Uh, Mike?
Mike Morris, Stephen.
Eric? Uh, Sue? Heather?
Heather Summer, Heather.
Um, if you can see them. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your republic, which stands on its stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all. Alright, uh, the first item on our agenda for tonight's meeting is the election of board officers in accordance to policy nine one three zero. We will start with the election of the board chair. So I will now open the floor for nominations for chair. Any nominations? Who is nominated?
Mike Sharon.
Mike Morris.
Mike Morris. Any other nominations for chair? I'll say that. Seven, eleven. Any discussion? Not seeing any other nominations and not seeing any other, uh, not having any discussion. Uh, we'll do a, a, a roll call vote. Mary? Is not here. Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlinson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Mike Morris.
Epstein.
He's Epstein. Uh, alright, Mike Morris is our, is our chair and I will pass the meeting off to you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate your role and I appreciate your confidence, everyone. Um, alright, that being said, I think one of the things that I remember being productive in some of these elections in the past is to, especially with some of the, the, with the, the secretary of the treasury, but might as well for the vice chair too. I'm aware of at least one of those, one member who's interested. Is there any, are there any other members that are interested in serving? So, I'll accept, um, nominations for vice chair. And with that, I'll nominate Sue as our vice chair.
Just one second.
Hey, Mary, beat it to that one, Eric, sorry. I'm sorry, Carrie. Uh, is that somebody chugging in or is that a?
Oh, a, a second.
Okay, we got you. Thank you, Carrie. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, I'm sorry, any other, any other discussion? Actually, I'm going to throw a piece of discussion out. My nomination is based on one very key piece. Uh, over the course of my last year of serving as the superintendent, I think it's important to point out that we've had to make some difficult decisions. There's been some times where there were very different opposing, opposing views. And a couple of key circumstances, one of the things you would hope from a very seasoned board member, is for them to be the voice of, uh, of, uh, what's the right term? Well, experience, but also of, of compromise, which is what we needed. And I think that is an extremely important part of being the vice chairs, to, to be that voice of compromise and be able to, to help lead in that circumstance. And Sue definitely did that over the course of the last year. So I'm very happy to be able to nominate her and I'm glad that, uh, I'm hopeful that everybody else will see that as well. So with that being the case, is there any other discussion? Alright, a roll call vote. Uh, Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Mary's not here. Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Kirsten?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Alright, so that carries unanimously. Congratulations and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Uh, nominations for secretary. Anybody interested in serving as a secretary? That being said, uh, I knew that there was at least one, uh, person available. Um, so I nominate Mike Sharon as our secretary. Is there a second? Sue got that one. Alright, uh, is there any other nominations for secretary? Any discussion on the nomination for secretary, Mike Sharon? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote. Sorry, a, a, a roll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary's not here. Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Karen? I vote yes. Kirsten?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Alright, that motion carries unanimously. Mike is our secretary. We'll move on to treasurer. Again, uh, I'm aware of at least one interested party. Is there any other, anybody else that is interested? You're the party I was aware of. Alright, uh, I would like to nominate Joe Coletti as our treasurer. Is there a second? Gabe got that one. Is there any other nominations for treasurer? Treasurer, I'm sorry. Any discussion on Joe Coletti's nomination as a treasurer? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary? Not here, sorry. Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
I vote yes. Kirsten? Great, thank you. Alright, that carries unanimously as well. Congratulations and I appreciate all three of you, again, volunteering to serve in that capacity.
We also appreciate you, Mike, and our vote down.
Thanks, appreciate that. Alright, uh, that is, uh, our, uh, first order of business. Um, you, uh, there are elections, office elections. Move on to public comment, item number four. You'll bear with me for a moment. Fevered and over a marvellous community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So in anticipation of potentially, uh, a, a number of, uh, people wanting to present tonight, let's refresh everybody that generally we hold the comments to three minutes, but it is within the chair's authority to extend a discussion. And, uh, I guess what I would really like to just maybe get a feel for is, within the room, how many people plan on presenting comment? Two. Okay, and then online, could you show us with a digital hand, anybody that's interested in presenting comment? This one? Okay, alright, so I think we have a reasonable amount of time to be able to accommodate everybody. So great, so, uh, what I'll first do is open it up. I'm sorry, Gabe.
Do you think I should close the door? Okay.
Okay. Uh, you know what, it's a public meeting and unless it gets real noisy.
Thanks.
Alright. So, uh, I would ask you, within the board, within the room, if you could please identify yourself and then step up to podium and, uh, please present. Sorry, if people'd like to go first. Sure?
My name's David O'Gill. I live at thirty-seven Padawan Trail. Uh, I've lived, uh, in the Ram district for thirty-three years, my wife and I, there's two kids. Uh, who are now staying out of the house. And, uh, I teach at the University of Connecticut. And I'm in the first year writing program there. And I'm very passionate about education as a means for growth for students. Too often, I think, though, an explicit act receives more public attention, such as this racist news, than the underlying problem itself. That problem is neither adequately nor fully addressed, whether justice applies to the act or not. Uh, my heart breaks for students of color, their families, as they deal not only with this specific act, but with the ongoing sense of injustice. I understand your faculty is filled with talented and motivated teachers. And I urge you to unleash their resilience to address these students' needs. One teacher in the district told me recently, look at what we accomplished when we pivoted to the pandemic. Imagine what we can do pivoting to this issue. Your teachers are professional practitioners and they are ready to partner and we. As a board, you too have tools to address the problem of injustice. One, you may direct your superintendent to immediately empower and engage your talent in fact, fact. I'm concerned, though, about an effective partner. I'd like to say this in the kindest way possible. I believe we need to be nice to each other. I believe that we need to listen to each other, that we need to speak our truths. And we need to collaborate in ways that promote equitable and civil discourse. But I'm deeply concerned that the superintendent does not conceptualize teachers as partners. And even holds hostility towards conversation about social justice. As the board is aware, the superintendent's professional experience is rooted in personality. I witnessed his framework of teachers as an employee at South Windsor High School nineteen years, uh, rather than seeing teachers as partners who are practitioners with expertise in their academic disciplines, in which they have earned degrees, certifications, and built experience. I'd like to share a specific personal experience that informs my concern that he lacks commitment and capacity to critical conversation about inclusion. Two thousand fifteen at South Windsor, I had a conversation with him about a poem by an Allen Ginsberg, which had themes of sexual identity at its core. I offered multiple interpretations, which included Harvard's literary critic Helen Bendler's reading, all which challenged common knowledge. He replied in a quote, "I don't understand hidden meaning." He was either unwilling or unable at the time to process multiple perspectives about identity in literature. Maybe you remember this incident, when I was teaching at South Windsor in two thousand and fifteen, I allowed the reading of an Allen Ginsberg poem, which a student had brought to our AP advanced placement, UConn ECE senior literature class. Two parents complained about the poem. I offered to speak with the parents. My request was denied. No conversation, no interest in conversation. Indeed, the administration said to me in a quote, "We just want to get this poem." So we moved to fire him. I negotiated a separation package instead of going to, uh, arbitration. What would be the point really of teaching under such hostility towards inclusion? A rejection of conversation about diverse perspectives in literature and a lack of good faith in discussion about teaching and learning. Immediately after then, UConn hired me. I've taught this same course many iterations for the past seven years. The ECE program, Early College Education Program, which I'm sure the board is familiar with, uh, addresses immediately issues of inequity. And in fact, I include anti-racist teaching statements from UConn ECE and the National Council of Teachers of English and my written remarks that I shared with the board prior to that. In conclusion, I stand before you with a professional and personal experience to respectfully ask for an honest rendering of this decision. I ask that you respond to the needs of the students of color and those whose identity in some way has been marginalized. I call for us to be kind to those who have historically been made to feel othered. I ask that this board commission its teaching staff to partner and collaborate with their administrative colleagues to do the difficult work of addressing the challenges of equity that's essential to democratic civic life. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment that's present? Please, sir.
Please, you know, the name's Carrie Dennis. You can see me at different times over the last few years. Earlier this year, during the budget presentation, there was a discussion, extremely. It was a stigma that I've already dealt with. If you had discussed the budget, one thing in this company, with this budget, this presentation, all the other boards, UTA, etc., the track, uh, obligations of budget, contractually obligated, can live with that. Same time, we looked at contractual operations this year, one kind of disaster. And I was speaking to, and so negotiated, three years ago, the previous negotiations. I went to meeting, I listened to presentations. I did not understand the obligations, it's a, a tiny copy of the, uh, kind of, who's able to project out the cost of bidding. I was pretty much dead on. Very hard to increase this year's budget, was it due to? As a citizen, this is the longest years. I want to understand what we're bringing to as a community when we go to that box about programs. Despite, uh, contract, contractually obligated costs, all these issues. The board is, uh, performing their function adamantly. And to the stature as this qualified state law. And I have to call it for that. Whatever that asks for as a citizen, when you protect the budget scheme as a citizen next year, that you can do so in a manner of understanding whatever you agree to tonight, you're going to fall under that line of, contractually obligated costs. I'm not sure if you know this this year. I'm not sure if you're in the cost of that. And I want to be a citizen for the time of service. Having said that, I appreciate everything that you all do. Work hard, it's a tough job. And I'll base you all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present who would like to present for public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to online. Uh, if you could raise a digital hand, I'll ask Eric to let me know who's online that would like to present.
I can't.
Say it. Joanne Hebert, please.
Hello, thank you for, um, getting me to talk with the meeting to just make a quick statement. Uh, we also wanted to comment on the recent situation, uh, with the unfortunate, um, the news being fine with the void block. I do want to admit that the investigation took place that, you know, the student has been located and that's a whole separate issue that would be dealt with, you know, as a personal situation. But I am believing that Ram will take this opportunity as a learning and teaching event, as the gentleman had said earlier. I had, um, I worked for a school district that has honored to give this work for the last couple of years. Really, so beginning after the, you know, the social indubrisation that happened in our company. Um, I feel like our district could really be a model for others. Um, I don't want to mention them. I will send a letter to all of you, um, for including them, but they do a terrific job. I find that it seems like Ram is defensive, and I could be wrong, this is from the outside looking in. You know, they're defensive to, you know, put things aside or, you know, defend different things or that things aren't happening there or it's not, you know, it's not isolated incident. But, but I approve that people could look at it as an opportunity to learn and grow. Like I said, I've always been welcoming and, and kind to everyone, but the other thing is the work that we've done extensively as a district, we learn so much. In the shoes of some of the people that sent this to you last, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit much at times. We really don't go in the grocery and everything. So, you know, Ram is such a, you know, I, I have three children that went through the Ram school system, they're all doing excellent academically. I think Ram is at the forefront. I'd like to see some of these, you know, to make well-rounded students to, you know, talk about things head-on in social justice world. You want to raise well-equipped students, go out there into the world and to, to make some kind of thing. So, I mean, so you can, can walk, you know, you simply can't, maybe just work in something for that. You know, between other side, right, that people saying that they don't want to undertake any kind of, any kind of lessons or what should they have to do, because it was a fun isolated incident. That's really kind of what you learn when you really connect yourself to learning and, and, and having open workshops and forums and really developing. There are kind of three things to have. I mean, it's not something you want to do and you never want to say the wrong thing, but you really need to be able to listen to the people who it hasn't ended. You know, and I'm thinking the majority of what I have this number of that, you know, is not in the ground there. So we need to open ourselves to all of whom within that group, everybody that come forward. And I always think the office committee, the law enforcement, to, um, and, and to include the students, like undergrad in the minute, that the students feel like they're left out. And your students are the brightest ones there, so why not, you know, you get them involved as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to present public comment? Raise a digital hand for Eric and he'll let me know. No one? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Alright, that, uh, moves us on to item five. No one here, asking just a piece of? So, uh, there is one, uh, piece that would like to, um, entertain a motion to add, uh, to our, uh, letter of intent to retire, um, portion of the agenda, which is item, uh, nine point two. Um, if we could add the letter of intent to retire from Linda Thurber Lund, uh, to the consent agenda. She, uh, we, we got that notice, uh, just a little bit later than, uh, when we had sent out the initial, uh, agenda. So, um, uh, like I said, I'd like to get a motion to add that. Okay, any, uh, second? Alright, thank you. Do a voice vote. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, so we'll go ahead and add that if you can discipline me to remember to do that. Thank you. Alright, that moves us on. Is there any other additions or deletions to the agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the student representative reports. Roland, you are up.
Alright, so I just, first I just wanted to congratulate the Ram music department for a, you know, successful holiday concert. And this was kind of, I, I want to say this was, there was one, at least from my perspective, that was kind of like really back to the old, like, you know, must mess where, mess where everybody just, you know, crowded together, you know, you know, to celebrate the holiday season. And before, uh, the excellent music, the both the chorus and the band, uh, before. And, um, so yeah, I just wanted to congratulate them on that. And then I also just wanted to, uh, kind of, uh, cover like the spirit week that's happening this week. Because obviously, with it, with it being the holiday season, a lot of kids are, you know, excited to express their holiday spirit. Uh, so we had a successful holiday headwear date today. Uh, tomorrow's holiday, we can carry to it today. Day, um, Wednesday's platoon day, uh, Thursday is h- uh, holiday, uh, this Wednesday, and Friday's holiday weekend. So that, it'll be my, uh, holiday, uh, spirit, uh, awesome, so.
Where's your headwear?
I, I, no, I didn't.
I would have worn my Yee cap.
So, I mean, I, I, a lot of people asked me to wear my body, the old costume tomorrow that I have, so I won't be participating in that one.
Or maybe join my life sub, so.
But not this one, because I really have a lot of holiday headwear, so.
Alright. Thank you. Gabe?
Uh, definitely, I was in the highlight on that too. I'm very confused about that. Uh, also the winter sports, everyone is getting to the winter sports. I've heard a lot of people talking about prep, swim team, hockey. Uh, also, I'm also looking at whether there are tests happening. A lot of students are feeling very anxious about that. Uh, definitely, this year, we have the COVID, the midterms, um, are back and everyone's definitely feeling that air anxiety about that after the winter break, so I'm seeing that, boys.
Good point. Great. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, uh, we concluded student representative reports. We'll move on to the, uh, chair report. So our last meeting included some clear feedback from a variety of stakeholders as part of the public comment regarding concerns of the culture here at Ram and that carries through this evening. You know, concerns have been voiced publicly, uh, both in the, you know, the River East and I think in just the general conversations that I've heard about, you know, the potentially the events being swept under the rug. Our superintendent can provide you all, and I'm, I'm confident he will, with a much more detailed accounting of the action items and, and next steps that have been taken to date. But what I can tell you is that Mr. McNamara and the administration take this very seriously. They've engaged with multiple resources and organizations at every opportunity in a very short time since the events have unfolded. They've met with the town leaders and organized to strategize community-based approaches and will pursue the facts and follow through on the needs of our students and staff. This is not a small task and it will take time, but they are committed to doing what is necessary, as is the goal. Tonight, we also held our Board of Education Officers' elections. And as a parent of this kids in this school system, I'd like to thank the members who selflessly volunteered to accept additional duties on top of the significant time and energy sacrifices all of our members already make. Between regular meetings, additional budget meetings, professional development, subcommittee meetings, what we've come to understand as something called a non-meeting, which we've also participated in. Volunteering to be on the board is not a small commitment and I'm very honored to serve among the members of this board. While there's always work to do, it's also important that we take time to recognize and applaud achievement. And so it's my pleasure on behalf of the board, and Roland almost stole some of my thunder, but I think I have a little bit of info I can throw out there to kind of capitalize on what he was saying, but to congratulate the eleven Ram middle school students who are recently accepted into the Eastern Connecticut Honors and Music Ensemble. The students were selected for the ensemble after auditioning for a judge. And one of the students, and I'm just going to apologize because names, I am terrible with them, I'm embarrassed by it, but I'm going to try my best. I believe the name is Amaya Ramos. Attained the high honor, attained the high honor achievement of a perfect score, which is just incredible. It's awesome. So, uh, leading the way for Ram and music as usual, and I think, I think there's, you know, there's Sydney all over the place, just, uh, attesting to the awesome music program we have here. Really glad to see that it's carrying on. It's also my honor to, on behalf of the board, to applaud our Ram music department. Ram has been, uh, recognized again as a district that is one of the best communities for music education in two thousand and twenty-two. This board, uh, recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, community leaders, who have made music part of a well-rounded education. Ram is just one of seven hundred and thirty-eight districts across the country, across the country, to receive the recognition this year. Last week's winter contest, concert, as Roland alluded to, showcased the talents of our high school musicians. And we look forward to the middle school concert, which I anticipate is in January, is that right? Yeah. So hope everybody gets a chance to participate in that as well. Uh, Ram football hit a milestone this year in that they qualified for the state playoff competition for the first time in Ram football history. It's a pretty, uh, significant achievement, especially for a school our size. Uh, exceptional hard work and I would just congratulate the, uh, coaching staff and the team on their hard work and their stellar performance on the football field this year. Finally, it's also my honor on behalf of the board to recognize and congratulate the Ram volleyball team for winning their second consecutive state championship. We wanted to recognize the team tonight at the board meeting, but, uh, all those stellar athletes are all involved in other athletics towns. So there was enough of a conflict that we wouldn't have had the majority of the team here, and so it wasn't a very good option. We hope to have them join us at our January meeting and hopefully that'll work out so that we can recognize and applaud them in person. And finally, I'd be remiss as a retired army officer if I didn't, uh, include a safety brief. It's just something we do. As the holiday season and the winter break is upon us, the Ram Board of Education asks the students, staff, and the community to have a safe, restful, happy holidays and come back to us in the new year ready to get after it. Alright, uh, that is, I- All right, uh, that is item seven, which moves us on to item eight, the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Uh, just in the, in the theme of music recognition, one thing that didn't get, uh, mentioned was Friday night was, I think it was the first of a, uh, it was a karaoke fundraiser, I think by the Music Honor Society. Rowan, you know its time, right?
Yeah, I know.
And, um, so I was here, there was, it was a busy evening, so there was the karaoke, uh, karaoke for students and the cafeteria and staff as well. We had a dance at the middle school, which was, oh, it brought me down memory lane going back to a middle school dance and maybe not in a good place down memory lane. Uh, we also had a girls' basketball game that night, but, uh, Rowan, not once, Taylor, sorry, not two, three, great job, great job. It was fantastic.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. He.
I really appreciate you bringing it up.
He brought it up.
I would, yeah, you did, yeah.
I told him, I said, Rowan.
That's why I kinda did what I'm trying to do, I think.
So, it was, uh, it was, it was a great night to be here, there's a lot of activity and, and it's just, it's great to have the energy in the building. But, um, in, in, in all seriousness, I wanna begin tonight by providing insight, um, and you alluded to, uh, Chip Morris, to the, to the work that's been happening. In response to the incident on November eighteenth, there's, this has been an extremely challenging time for the Ram community. And I wanna be sure that the board and the community are aware of what has been taking place over the past few weeks. In the wake of the incident, there have been several reports of other things experienced by Ram students that have been investigated using the lens of the board's non-discrimination policy. In each case, school administration has thoroughly investigated what has been reported and taken appropriate action based on their findings. This will continue to be the response if new information is brought to the attention of the administration. What we are experiencing here at Ram is not uncommon, as significant widely-publicized events also often serve as a catalyst for others to come forward and share their experiences. We have also been considering a long-term response that will help ensure Ram is a place where all students and families feel welcome, accepted, and valued. To that end, I have engaged with several organizations and individuals who focus on this work. I've participated in meetings with representatives from the State Department of Education, leaders from local and state organizations, and other consultants to discuss a well-planned, thoughtful, and appropriate approach to responding. One consistent recommendation stemming from these meetings has been to engage both students and staff in focus groups that will help better identify areas of need. Information from these conversations will enable the district to make more informed decisions and develop long-term plans. The other recommendation I have consistently heard is to implement a program for students that focuses on the port, the importance of an inclusive school environment. To that end, an agenda item for tonight's meeting is to introduce Joelle Murchison. Ms. Murchison has been a tremendous resource for the district over the past several weeks. She has a wealth of experience helping school districts and organizations navigate the challenges that can be associated with recognizing and valuing the diverse perspectives in creating a more inclusive school environment. I look forward to having Ms. Murchison speak later this evening with the board about the work that she does and can do for us. Today, I had the good fortune to attend the high school staff meeting. Dr. Brazier invited me to come to the staff meeting this afternoon, and it was, it could've been one of the best experiences that I've had here at Ram. It was alumni, I was twelve alumni, I believe I was twelve, who, who spoke about their experiences here in the district and, and how their experiences have prepared them for life beyond high school. And while each school, while each student had their own, or while each alumni, I should say, had their own unique experiences as students, there were consistent themes. The alumni spoke about how their experiences at Ram prepared them for life after high school. They explained how they learned the value of hard work while being students here at Ram, and that they knew their teachers cared about them. One thing that I'll mention, just based off of your comment about the anxiety you're feeling about midterms, a couple of them said they wished early on, when they're in their high school career, they had just relaxed a little bit. Because they realized that they've brought too much stress and too much anxiety and too much tension on them, so take those words as advice. Absolutely, it'll get to them. I know the teachers and staff in attendance appreciated hearing from these alumni as much as I did, and I appreciate the invite. And this concludes my report.
Okay. Moves us on to item number nine, the consent agenda. Uh, approval of the minutes from the November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, which is labeled as enclosure number nine point one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-first meeting? Hey Joe, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion regarding the, uh, minutes? Here, none. Do a voice vote. All in favor of a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-first meeting? All in favor? Any opposed?
None abstained.
One abstained, okay. Thank you. All right, that moves us to item nine point, I'm sorry, that vote carries. It moves us on to item nine point two, the retirement notifications, and this is where, uh, we'll add to, based on the, uh, the item four, uh, sorry, uh, five addition that was voted on by the board, we will add to the names of Linda Thurber Lund. Okay, so, uh, as part of item, uh, nine point two, uh, is there a motion to accept the upcoming retirements of? Joyce, I apologize, the names again, Joyce Lacavelli, Lacavelli, and Paul Bancroft, and Linda Thurber Lund. Thank you. Is there a second? Dave, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
On pause, it says January twenty twenty-four, is that correct?
That is, that is correct. So, Mr. Bancroft was kind enough to give us ample notification on his retirement, even though he's not really required to give it to us so early. His position is gonna be a very, his position is very unique. He, he manages and oversees a very unique program. And I would tell the board, it's gonna be challenging to replace Mr. Bancroft because of the unique certifications he has and the programs that he teaches. So, he's been communicating with Dr. Brazier and I about, about his upcoming retirement. He wanted to provide us, which we appreciate very much.
Yes, yeah, that's gonna be very, uh, big loss for us. Twenty twenty-four is accurate, I think.
Correct.
Any others, Stephen? I'll just take this opportunity, as I read through those notes, to identify that those are twenty-plus-year veteran educators that have spent the majority or all of their career here at Ram. And, uh, can't thank them enough. I've, I've had, got three kids now and one's already gone through, so I'm sure has had, uh, been the beneficiary of, uh, beneficiary of one of those three or all three. And, uh, I think that, you know, hitting that twenty-year mark and especially being able to provide all that time here at Ram, can't thank you enough and really appreciate all of your service to our community.
That's a good question.
Yeah. Um, all right. That being said, uh, if there's no other discussion, do a voice vote. Uh, motion to accept the upcoming retirements of Joyce. One more time. Lacavelli, Paul Bancroft, Linda Thur, Linda Thurber Lund. All in favor? Any opposed? Here, none, that carries unanimously. Which moves us on to item ten, old business. Uh, I don't have anything in the agenda, is there anything that we need? Okay. Which moves us on to item number eleven, new business, at eleven point one, um, Joelle Murchison, Consulting, E M G.
Sure, so, I, I would again like to thank Joelle Murchison for joining us tonight. She is the founder of the E M G Consulting Group for Business Education and Nonprofits. Ms. Murchison, as I said, has proven to be a valuable resource to myself, the administrative team in the district over the past several weeks. And I feel that she can help us navigate the challenges that we're currently facing, and I appreciate you taking the time to come up.
Absolutely, um, thank you so much for talking at my invitation, and thank you for all of the danger this evening. Uh, as interesting as I shared with Dr. McNamara probably twenty-ish years ago, um, as a much younger person, I actually came to Ram to facilitate a program, um, in assembly that the Anti-Defamation Week used to run called Names and Rights. And I understand that Ram adapted that program and created something very similar to allow students the opportunity to really have their voices heard around school community. Um, so, it's a little ironic, um, that twenty-plus years later, I stand here in front of you again, as we as a society sort of reimagine some of these issues that are in front of us in a very different way, in a way where we communicate, uh, across the social media lines without sitting in front of one another, where we learn a lot about people or what we think we know about people, and we use that to inform the way we behave. Um, or if we don't know enough about people and we act and respond in ways that may not be accurate. Um, we have a real opportunity, certainly here in this district, more broadly in society, to begin talking, um, to one another, to take opportunities to learn from one another, to hear individuals, um, from their voices. I've been in this work for most of my career. It was not intended, in fact, when I was in high school, I said I wanted to be Secretary of Education of the United States. Because at that time, I grew up in a district where a high school was about, um, about half the size of Ram, actually, about five hundred and twenty students. It was made up of similar, similarly to Ram, three distinct communities. Two communities were predominantly white and one community that was predominantly black. At the time, New York State was considered the most racially balanced school district in the state. Um, and yet, it's interesting, because as I reflect that, many of my classmates will speak to the fact that we had deep, um, intentional engagement with one another, visiting each other's homes, understanding each other's cultures. And so, as we grew, um, into adults, we oftentimes reflect on those experiences. Things are different now, right? We don't necessarily visit people in their homes, we visit people on social media. We visit people through, um, articles, we read documentaries and things of that nature. And we don't have the capacity to really engage in meaningful dialogue. That's where I think some of the work that I've done over time with a number of different districts, um, private and public sector institutions, and higher education would really be helpful here at Ram. Um, you heard earlier, um, Dr. McNamara talk about the importance of, um, focus groups. Um, and I think one of the public comments talked about leveraging the teachers, the students, the school community here. Um, what we've seen, right? Even in those painful moments, they're supposed to have something to say, right? Um, and so, had it not been for this incident, which I know, I'm sure none of you would like to have the, um, the, the, um, public, um, spotlight on you in the way that it has, it really has created an opportunity to leverage those here who have a voice, who want something, who want to see, um, the school community impacted, um, both students and teachers. So, we're really, um, suggesting an opportunity to conduct some focus groups with the students and teachers to understand, get a better understanding some of what Dr. McNamara and his colleagues have been hearing from students because they're now coming forward, or, you know, teachers who are coming forward about different incidents that they have either been a part of or that they witnessed, um, to really get a sense of what's going on. What are not only the challenges, but what are the strengths within this district? And to use that information to really help shape a plan to allow the district to move forward, really intentionally, creating space for everyone within the school community to be involved. We also recommend, um, some programming, um, for students, right? Because I think there are students and, uh, teachers and families who are saying, so what's happening? When are you gonna tell us what's gonna happen next? And will there be another incident? How do we get ahead of it? So, really creating a space for students to begin to learn. Now, we talked about actually even, how might we make that available to the broader community, right? Um, we wanna be deliberate and start very intentionally, one step at a time. And so, there are organizations, fortunately, in the community that have stepped up and said they wanna partner, and that they can provide some of those community spaces. But as we ta, as we talk about this district and Ram, I think the focus is really here, and what we'll do within this particular school community to provide opportunities for folks to learn from one another. Uh, I've been doing since, um, twenty twenty, uh, really the result of George Floyd and all of this sort of awareness around injustice in this country, um, a series of sessions that are entitled A Courageous Conversation on Race. What have I learned in the past two, almost three years? Well, what I wanted is that many of us actually have no idea what race really means. Most of us don't even know what diversity, equity, or inclusion mean. Instead, we respond based upon what we think they mean. And we fill in the blanks based upon what we've heard, or perhaps what we don't know, as opposed to really taking the opportunity to, to uncover some of the facts. How do we get here? Why is it that we don't know much about individuals who might have a different skin complexion than us? Or other dimensions of diversity that have impacted in our society and certainly in our district? So, really beginning with the concept of, what are the facts? What do we need to know? Where are the opportunities for us to learn? And then, let's talk about our feelings, because not everybody feels the same. Not everyone has the same experiences. In fact, many of us have not had proximity to be able to have, quite frankly, a really informed, um, opinion about some of the things that happen in our world and that we're expected to react to right away. So, moving from the facts and thinking about our feelings, what does that look like? How does that play out? And then, our future stuff. So, what do we do now? Where do we go from here? Um, what are deliberate actions that can be taken in this district? Not one-size-fits-all. The work that I've done has always been very customized with districts, to really partner with them to understand what makes sense here. Uh, I said to, um, uh, another group the other day, oh, you know, we tried to, you know, put photos on our website with people who, you know, look different than us. And I said, well, why force something if that's not who you are? Let's uncover the diversity that exists within your community, right? So, let's begin to talk about that and, and think about what implications that has more broadly. Um, that session really has created a space for people to use as a launching pad, right? Then, help create more and more opportunities for dialogue. Um, this is not really something that can happen overnight. Oftentimes, as someone who has spent most of my career as chief diversity officer, traveled for a decade, I was the inaugural chief diversity officer at UConn. And oftentimes, folks think you can wave a magic wand and everyone will be there, so tonight you all be friends and give little hands and say, kumbaya. And it doesn't work that way, right? Because we all have spent some time in this game, and it takes some time to unlearn what we have been taught or what we've embraced on our own. In many instances, because we just don't know what we don't know. And so, it really is, I think personally, about one-on-one relationships, dialogue between individuals, and literally one step at a time. So, that's really what I would suggest for Ram. I don't think that in terms of, you know, there are clearly others out there who would tell you that if you do this and check the box, that this will, you know, sort of make this the, the most diverse and inclusive district on earth. I don't know that I could promise you that, right? By tomorrow or by next year, even by, you know, uh, next year, next week, next year, right? Um, which will be here shortly. But I think the important piece is really being deliberate about starting and starting its own way. And acknowledging that you don't know everything, and then guess what? Along the way, actually, might even make some mistakes. But that's all a part of the learning process. You talk about that in your mission statement for the district. Um, so, I, I'm really pleased that actually, um, Dr. McNamara and I got to know each other on a Saturday morning, really, really early, when I answered the phone not realizing that it was Saturday, and I didn't have to answer my business line, because that is when we talked and engaged for the first time. Um, and so, when I made the connection to Ram, to me, um, it was really worth the, the work, right? Um, and being able to challenge. You had, you know, some conversations where I'd say, no, I don't know. And you'll say to me, well, I'm like, mm, I don't know, let's push a little further. And I think that's what this is about. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. There is a proposal that, um, Dr. McNamara received from us, which really is a, a little bit more detailed about what I just described. Um, there are lots of other things that you could do, uh, but for me, at this point, I think it really does make sense to really get some information from folks who are in the school community and then take deliberate steps if they're right or make sense. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm certain some of you have probably ruled me, um, for this, so if there's anything I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Question.
Um, you brought up feelings, and I think the key is really to ensure that everyone is allowed to share their feelings in a safe environment. How would you ensure that that happens while they're in groups together or, you know, the safety? Because everyone's feelings are different, I was taught.
Absolutely. Um, so, one of the things that we do in all of our sessions is we start out in two ways. One, doing the checking, just getting a sense of how people are feeling, one, or how are you feeling in this room, right? Because realistically, even if you walked into this room, whatever was happening before you came in, it was sort of present in your mind. So, whatever you're hearing, you're hearing through the lens of whatever you're feeling. So, getting a sense of how people are feeling initially. Then we also lead with a set of group guidelines, or ground rules, which you're probably more familiar with that term, that really set the framework for how the discussion will operate. One of those things is about using I statements. Now, one of the things that I think really kind of disarms a lot of, uh, when people will express a feeling, they'll talk about it as we always, or this is what we've always done in this district, or what I always, you know? And really encourage people to be I, right? One, that means you have to think about, do you really feel that way as you're saying it? But also allowing others to really think and reflect on how they feel, right? So, not speaking for everyone, speaking just for you, right? So not speaking for everyone, speaking just for you, right? Um and sometimes that's harder, but it also means that you can only talk about experiences you've had and not what you've heard, right? So that brings it down to how you're really feeling. Um with those ground rules, we'll constantly refer back to that. And then should be particularly in the the focus groups, they'll be relatively small groups, really well staffed. When we do a broader student assembly, there will always be a partnership with you, which probably will look something like what you've done um with the program that's under the middle school, where there are ones where students can exit, staff can exit, um be able to take a moment, right? And have someone there to sort of help them process through something that might be a true pain point for them at that time. Um so we really do try to work very intentionally. Um certainly, we will look to to have students who partner um with their colleagues, with their peers, um in in the student assembly component. Um but that's really important is really ensuring that there's safety and really setting an expectation for it in the larger of the staff.
Thank you.
I have a question about the execution. You're talking primarily about focus groups, which I think are a great callback for open discussion, honest discussion. Are you talking about students and staff, are teachers mixed in together? Do students get an opportunity maybe just to join groups that are mostly just students for some reason?
Yes, we actually are, we about separate groups of students and staff. Um you know, recognizing that there are some staff who've had some either their own experiences with this work or as they've, you know, had a long tenure here in the district, want to hear from them. Students absolutely in a separate group. Um we're hoping that there's some students that may have responded to the note that went out from the principal saying, you know, hey, we're working on this, and raised their hands, said, you know, I count me in. Um but certainly giving opportunities to additional students to do that.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Uh, Dan? Chris, and Eric? So the only thing I would say is I don't want to embarrass uh 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 as far as, but I did take an opportunity to read through your your website and uh your education is uh is intimidating, to say the least. Um but the so the one thing I would just say is that as listening to what you presented, one of the things that I think I've heard in our community is uh, you know, people uh certainly concerned about an underreaction. And uh I think, you know, there's also people who are worried about an overreaction. And I thought some of what you discussed about tailored approaches and uh doing factual assessments, and I think that all is very important to, you know, kind of number one is swaging everybody's kind of concerns and fears. It'd be remiss if we didn't look around the country and say that these are some subjects that are board of education and communities in general are are facing, you know, everywhere. And so there's and there's no, there's some fight between boards of education who maybe don't recognize parents, you know, rights to the extent that uh communities expect them to and they're, you know, suspicious of anybody that frankly wants to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion because they're in some circumstances are are trigger words. And like I said, it would just be disingenuous not to not to to open that, you know, add that to the discussion. But I I do appreciate you coming here and talking to us about, you know, the the proposal that you provided and your approach to it. And I think as one individual board member, I I feel, I feel, I feel I feel better about what you're doing. So anyway, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eleven point two, the strategic planning presentation by Ms. Diane Dugas.
So as the board knows, the district must engage in uh the strategic planning processes here to have a three-year plan for the start of the twenty-two twenty-four school year. Uh there are individuals and organizations that help districts with this process, with the process of developing a strategic plan. And I met with the finance subcommittee meeting last week to review some of these options that I've explored. Ultimately, the subcommittee felt that the best option for Ram was to work directly with our local rest, Eastcon, on this process. And we are joined tonight by Diane Dugas, Director of K-12 and Leading and Learning for Eastcon, who will briefly explain the process Eastcon utilizes and can use with the district and an anticipated timeline of the work to be done. Thank you, Diane, for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, on the work we put forward to working on this journey with you. And it really is an iterative process in terms of taking a look at Ram's current core values, your mission, your vision, the portrait of a graduate. That really is the foundational work for moving forward and grounding every decision that's made, as you know well, as a board. Uh really, the purpose of a strategic plan is to serve as a roadmap, as um said, in terms of moving forward, uh it should guide your decisions as a board, goals as a board, moving forward that guides superintendent, to principals, to teachers, through and through lines. You do the strategic advancement plan as a North Star, where ultimately do you want to go? So in that process, we do a variety of activities. It really starts first of all with um working collaboratively with the superintendent to think about a steering committee, a small representative of various stakeholders to really guide the process. In that guiding, uh part of that is planning uh what data will be looked at, very similar to what we just heard. Um we take a look at focus groups, who needs to be, who, what voices need to be heard. Um we certainly look at students and community members and parents and um staff, as well as the board and administration, comprising all of those stakeholders together, uh whether what is the plan for that in terms of timeline? We look at, um is that in the evening, is that during the day? Uh we provide multiple opportunities for voice through survey as well as onsite focus groups for that work. We also take a look at the data that needs to be reviewed. We collect a wide variety of data. The strategic planning team actually then utilizes that. So a broader group of stakeholders, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five folks, again, broad representation are brought together over the course, again, determined by the steering committee, whether that's a Saturday, or several evenings, coming together and through protocols, looking at really a SWAP, what are the district strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the threats, what are the opportunities? Through those protocols and analyzing data, both internal and external, we put that together and it is a very smooth process of how we draft goals and then we run forward. And then it really results in an action plan. What's the timeline for those goals? Uh small chunks, we really look at thirty, sixty, ninety days. It should be a really workable document, not something that sits on a shelf. We do something a little bit, we create a communication plan as well, for the strategic planning team, who needs to be communicated with, how and her what purpose. Really thinking, again, there's a difference between what students need to know, what parents, what community members, and their role in the plan, because everyone does have to stay in that. So our timeline for those activities, um as you were provided, is starting in January and completing by April, by April vacation, so that it can sort in terms of your goal set moving forward and the budgetary process. Be ready for communication out to start following you. Happy to answer any questions.
So just to circle back, as I think, just to refresh the board memory. So we're operating off of what is now a three-year plan that uh landed for renewal in the middle of COVID and we uh extended that strategic plan for two additional years just to get us on the other side. So it's really somewhat of a elongated three-year plan that is stretched into a five-year plan. And so, you know, as part of our our, when hiring our new superintendent was, at the same time coming on board with the responsibility of of working towards developing our next three-year strategic plan, uh which is, you know, centered on what uh what Diane came to talk to us about. And if a lot of the bulk of that work, if I'm correct, is in the next six months? Four to five months?
January, January, February.
Yeah, so um I think I I had a couple of other comments, but I'll just kind of go around the room first just to give the board opportunity to ask me questions. Anybody? Question?
The plan that we have in place, it worked very well with the community members and who we had involved. Will we be looking at that, if we're involved, and comparing what we're doing, what we did, and what we're doing, what we're going to do?
So one of the pieces will be the data of your last strategic plan in terms of taking a look at that. But then the community and stakeholders will be determined by a steering committee. So that committee will be comprising, will you choose that to lead and who you think is involved for that? As well as the strategic planning team, which is a larger group that will do go through the process. And again, that's based on the dynamics of the plan and who you can support to be a part of that process.
That's great, because I I believe everyone felt heard when we went through this process. And that's really important.
Just to pick up on a question you asked of the previous presenter, in terms of, we use protocols around consensus building and we also use codes of collaboration. So when we start the process, we identify our working norms together and then also um do a consensus protocol so that, again, every voice is heard. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? So I don't necessarily have a question, but more of a comment, just kind of piggybacking off of Sue talking about stakeholders. I have a, you know, what, one of my backgrounds is planning and I think the best plans that I ever put together was responsible for executing were centered in developing buy-in from the, you know, we say stakeholders, but frankly, the key stakeholders. And I'm really glad that Mr. Spinelli is here as the teacher's rep. Because I I, you know, I know that we talked about all the stakeholders, the community, the parents, board, administrators, but in in my opinion, the faculty will be, as probably is in almost all circumstances, carrying a lion's share of the load of actually making or breaking any strategic plan that we might put together. And so I think what I would just ask you and also Mr. Spinelli, I I know this is something you wouldn't want to do, but to really encourage the the teachers to dig in, um not only to, you know, volunteer, participate, but also hold your ground. I mean, come in and say, because what I, the tragedy of it would be for us to go through this effort, frankly, spend the money, because it's always in the back of my mind. And uh and then and then come out with a plan that doesn't necessarily, it it, you know, we don't have, you know, the majority or a consensus of those key stakeholders, specifically the faculty, really walking into first year one, year two, year three, feeling really good about not only what are we supposed to accomplish, but you know, how can we continuously improve it and things of that nature? If we don't have that buy-in, then it's it's almost a wasted exercise and I would hate for that to be the case. So I'm really looking forward to all the community members participating, but specifically the faculty. Any other questions, Chris? I think you love the communication plan, right?
I love the communication.
Yes, I can feel that coming from that side of the table. It's our resident communications expert, so I'm sure she'll be able to provide some some feedback on that. Thank you very much for your time.
I definitely look forward to working with all of you.
Appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
All right, so as part of um that, is that, we did a presentation then? Um sorry, okay. So as part of that uh presentation and our strategic planning um uh preparation, uh we need to entertain a motion to have the superintendent enter into a contract with Eastcon to facilitate the development of the Region Eight strategic plan.
Can we ask a lot?
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we, why don't we get the motion on board and we'll talk about it. Move that, Eric, for a second, okay? Sue, do you recognize for questions?
What is this, a contract?
Sure, uh a little over seventeen thousand dollars that I gave you with the costs. I had sent uh in my week, you know, I'd said, it's okay, I I'd sent out the different contracts that were uh Eastcon, one was one, and then the two other organizations that I had solicited contracts on.
Okay.
That's okay.
Any other questions?
Good strike.
This is a topic that we discussed in some detail at a framing subcommittee. Eastcon is not the only applicant, but um the connotation of their timeliness being available in you to start very early, and also on a long-standing relationship with them, and also becoming a reasonable fee. You know, it was kind of a trifecta, you know, that was a great analysis.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Here or none, do a voice vote, all in favor? Five, any opposed? Here or none, that motion carries, if you may have a seat. Thank you. Yeah. All right, eleven point three. Uh review and approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year calendar, enclosure eleven, enclosure eleven point three.
Yeah, so just the proposed calendar of your board package is a result of a collaborative effort between four districts that compromise, comprise Region Eight. I looked closer to the uh superintendent of the other district, um and I would recommend the adoption of this calendar. Uh and I can certainly amputate any questions the board members may have. Over the floor, questions? I'll just, I'll say it pretty much, it mirrors the
It does.
It mirrors the calendar that we've used. In fact, I've been speaking with um the superintendent, Hebron, and he said this is probably the most in-sync calendar that we've had with the other districts that that we haven't had in a while. We try to do that for, we know that there's a lot of families uh uh who, you know, with, obviously with children in multiple districts. We know that there's staff members that live within the community that this has an impact on. So we really made a concentrated effort to sync it up with more of that messaging.
And it's great, they're already dismissing folks, it's much better than coming in and having, so that works.
Okay, any other discussion?
Can I just have a question?
Yeah.
Why don't we do that with, like, really, go back, just to go to school for two days and then we hit, and then it's a long weekend?
It's a question that I've had for years. It's just that's, that's the way that generally the calendars in the states in in this area start, is starting prior Labor Day and then having that long weekend. It's just, the calendar, what we're trying to do is we try to sync up with the other districts that are within our community and that's just historically what's been done. Not just in this area, across the state. I mean, it's it's a very typical way of approaching. Enigably, I think that there's a lot of people that appreciate having a couple of days in, having, Rowan is a student, I think, is acknowledging it too. You start off with a couple of days and then you have a long weekend and hit the ground running on the day after.
I'll be honest, I I looked into this before and did some research and I think I brought it up to Scott, this was years ago. It's the calendar is isn't the same in the state of Connecticut, it's different. But in our area, it is the same. But I always felt like, why do we do this? And some districts outside of our area start after. But, you know, um when Scott tells me, Sue, if we lose battle, I try to think in my head to remember, fight this battle or take my own battle. And this is, this isn't one that I try to take further, but I have really did some homework and researched this and um our area sticks with this. And if we were, if we were to say, as a board, to change this, it would literally impact, you know, all of our three towns.
Right. Yeah, it's not something I would follow the sword.
Right, me neither.
I find it completely irritating.
I I agree.
It's fine, again, it's not something, I was just curious if there was some sort of urban war behind it or?
The the thing, the thing that I most say is um some districts have actually gone down the route of starting actually earlier. So they get it, uh just this past year, I think, last two days of the district, Christine's nodding her head, and there's just a resident there. And some other districts, I believe more so in the Hartford area, actually started, they did a full week. So they did their professional development days in a week leading up to the week before Labor Day weekend, and then they get a full day of, full week of school in, then they have a three-day weekend. And there's a big part of it, too, I think for that, for the movement in that direction, is because of the fact that there have been some years where we've had so much snow and so much cancellation. So I think the idea of starting at that weekend before Labor Day is also to accomplish the idea of not eking into, you know, getting up to the end of June, if you have substantial snow days. And it's, and I'll say this, I have no problem saying this in a public recorded meeting, the state doesn't waiver on their one-hundred eighty-day requirement in any way. We we've actually had Idaho districts that have literally gone to June thirtieth and not accomplished their one-hundred eighty days and their school districts have been forced. It doesn't, oh, nope, that's only one-hundred seventy-nine, you've got to do another day in order for it to count as a school year. The state is archaic in their thinking with regards to their requirement to, like, oh, one-hundred eighty days is this magical number. I'm not saying there's not a value to having, obviously, a set number of school days, but respectfully, there's not a lot of work being done in schools on June thirtieth if schools actually still exist actually, there just is not, you know.
Because there are, there are more options today than there were before, you know, now that we have experience of it and we have caught the moment. You know, if we were ever getting down to that, down to the wire, you know, we could think about, oh, this no day, could we do it alone? Or, you know, I know none of the parents, I think we were up against one year, possibly eating into April vacation and that will turn into a big nightmare. Thank God we didn't have to do that, but that was a discussion that I had. We had to face as a board too as well. But there are other options, but it's not a sword that, I believe, it's
Right, it was your asking question.
A good, healthy conversation, though, to start with.
And I, what you're saying, the idea of saying, hey, listen, we did hybrid and we did this, that is, you should be the commissioner of education. did this, that is, you should be the commissioner of education, I know Joelle talked about aspirations and that, but that is not permissible. That is, they, they have said to us, you keep that one out, it needs to be days in school, so after doing virtual learning for, you know, and I'm not saying virtual learning is an ideal platform, but after doing virtual learning for a four-month period at the end of twenty twenty and then doing it in a hybrid fashion for a substantial portion of the year of the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year, that's not permissible. It's, which just is mine, it's mine.
And I would, I would want that.
No, of course, of course.
But if we were getting down to the end of June, that's crazy. Crazy.
I would just say the Morris boys, it's not the worst thing in the world for them to get a taste of two days and then have a weekend to reacquainten. Is there any other questions or concerns about the schedule? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just the one date is something that'll be December sixth, all the other professional development day are Fridays or a block, days off, like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great question and I'm going to be honest with you, in the first iteration of, of this, we actually had it on a Friday. One of the things that I was really trying to accomplish was to have it be as aligned as possible with the elementary schools, and so the elementary schools for that particular month had it on the sixth. I spoke with the administrative team and it really, they said, you know, we've done it before, I'm, I'm not on a Friday, and there's actually, if, if the elementary school has a early closing on a day where we do, don't have early closing and vice versa, it, it creates a transportation issue on both of those days, so to be a Friday versus doing it on Wednesday, but it negates that transportation issue, it made the most sense to do it on that day.
I think some of those professional days, teachers travel across different schools and I think particularly sometimes for particular professional subjects and topics, I think there's been some discussion about that, I thought that came up last year. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Kristen.
My observation was also about the professional days, I understand essentially about the early afternoons versus the mornings, with that backstory especially regarding funding those Friday weekends up to typically long weekends, three weekends, because has there been any research into absentees on those days because women can approach their core demands and those days become less academic because of student speciality, really?
I can't answer the backstory portion of it, I can tell you that I certainly can understand somebody expressing that concern, I haven't looked at the data for this year to see what the level of absenteeism is like.
Does that mean something that would be dangerous?
Sure.
I'm afraid those days don't, don't vary in a good sense because it's a holiday.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So, I don't have any other questions. So, eleven point three, if there is, is there any other discussion about that?
The, the, the last, the last day explosion, I assume that, that just, it's still there. And then also, I remember from last year that we killed a vote at some point about what day is graduation day, because most of the scenes of graduation school after that, so there's a little days in the shape of, across that period.
I'm sorry, Gabe, is there a question? Oh, no. Okay. All right, if there's no other discussion about the calendar, are there any concerns? Entertained a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year calendar as enclosed in eleven point three. Thank you, Carter. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Joe. Any other discussion? Hearing none, do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, which brings us to eleven point five, the annual review of policy forty-one eighty. Sorry. So, I'm sorry, eleven point four, the proposed twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting dates.
So, staying in the theme of calendars, the, in your packet is the proposed twenty twenty-three board meeting dates, and essentially what we've done is we follow the same format that we are using for the two thousand and twenty-two year, so I can certainly take any questions if people have.
I just know last year when we came to this discussion, it was, I think, a couple of the old, old school board members came up and said, hey, pushing the June meeting as early as it can be and pushing the August meeting as far back as it can be, and obviously we don't have a July meeting, was something that was beneficial to many, supporting, especially supporting people's vacation plans and things of that nature, so I did mention to Colin that as part of the framework that I would like to try and especially to accomplish that, so any other questions or concerns about the schedule? And frankly, it's almost the exact same footprint as the thing you reported. All right. So, yeah, some are opposed. With, with the exception of the district budget meeting from May first.
June nineteenth is a holiday.
It's, it's, Juneteenth was identified as a state holiday, it was not, the board would have to make a decision if, it's not identified as a day that we wouldn't have school, it's ultimately up to districts to make a determination whether they want Juneteenth to be something that they would be recognized as a holiday.
If it was recognized as a holiday, it would necessarily prevent us from having a board meeting, wouldn't be a school, it shouldn't be a school.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I don't know, is there, is there a, can start for the June nineteenth meeting? Um, I, I think it's appropriate, I think it's a reasonable discussion, I mean, what's the, what's the previous Saturday, I mean, I'm sorry, the previous Monday? I mean. Previous Monday would be, so, oh, by looking at twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, it would be, the, that, wait, that's not even the nineteenth.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yeah. Oh, twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, that's what.
So it would be.
When's, when's supposed to be our last day of school?
The sixteenth.
We just would have to be cautious, we'd have to be cautious about potential graduation dates, I'm seeing my ex-同事 about her, and, and, and our middle school, we have middle school ceremonies, so, you know, it's just, it's just something we have to be conscientious of, that's what I agree with the optics.
And I think it's sort of going into this whole experience of, you know, what are we going to look like as a community?
Yeah. I mean, look, I'm all for the earlier in June, does anybody have any significant emotion about moving it back or moving it up, I guess is the right way to say it. What's the, what is the previous day? I mean, the, the fifth or the twelfth, which I, you're saying from the twelfth's perspective, that would complicate things at school?
Just depends when we end up having graduation.
Would we do it on a Monday?
Yeah, we could do it on a day of the week, it's just if it's the last day and you, and you guys have further down.
What is expected to be the last day of school?
I have the thirteenth. Is that at Garrett though? It's on my.
I have, I have that as well, I have the thirteenth as the last day of.
So when is it?
Oh, yeah.
It won't graduate really, so yes.
Well, it was before the last day, so the weekend.
Right, so the twelfth would be same.
I like the twelfth better, because I don't want to go into it without the financials, especially heading into a summer where we're going to skip a meeting for one month.
Right.
Okay, so maybe we can make the adjustments. So let's adjust the motion then, motion to approve the twenty twenty-three meeting dates for the Board of Education with the one provision that we moved to January, the June nineteenth meeting to the June, to the date of June twelfth. Is there a motion for that?
So.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Gabe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, great, thank you. All right, eleven point five, the annual review of policy forty-one eighty, plan for minority staff recruitment, enclosure eleven point five.
So policy forty-one eighty focuses on minority staff recruitment. One aspect of the policy is that it is reviewed annually by the board each year. There is no action that needs to be taken tonight regarding this policy, we did have a policy subcommittee meeting, we went, we went to this policy, we discussed this policy, there was no recommended changes that were made for this policy, but again, it's a provision of the policy that if you review it and know that it will work, and I can certainly take any questions if we're in this time.
One thing I would throw in there is that while we're engaging actually EMT with some feedback, it certainly wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to ask them to take a look at that, provide them with feedback. Without any additional comments. Any other questions?
These are current.
No, no, it's just, yeah, we post, there, there are job fairs that do come up and, and there are certainly, so there's something called the rest alliance, which specifically focuses on, they have minority, well, pre-pandemic, they had very robust minority group job fairs, which I think we do in a previous position and certainly if they bring them back to, to life post-pandemic, then I certainly am doing this, but now it's basically, it would be myself, other administrators going out to improve it.
Okay, there's no item, no action I have on that, so if there's any other discussion on it, we'll move on to eleven point six, the first reading of policy sixty-one fifty-six, which is addressing enrollment in an advanced course or program in challenging curriculum.
So, as Chairman Morris alluded to, so there, there's a policy sixty, sixty-one fifty-six for a first read, this is something that we wouldn't take any action on this evening as a first read of a policy, it's just an opportunity to review it, see if there's any questions, any concerns about it. This policy is another new requirement resulting from recent legislative changes and follows the model policy provided to us by Shimon Goodwin. It was reviewed by the middle school and high school administrations as well as the guidance department's coordinators, and this is a policy that was reviewed and discussed by the board's policy subcommittee meeting at its la, subcommittee at its last meeting, and I can certainly take any questions. That, I'll just say anecdotally, this is a, this is really kind of setting in place some things that were already in existence here within the district, we're, we're very fortunate being so interconnected that our students at all levels, middle school students have opportunities to take very challenging courses, both in the middle school and if, if, if the needs arise to come to the high school and take some, take some challenging course, if it's, if it's within their, you know, within their aptitude, and, and this just really memorializes something that, again, was in existence here in the district, probably wasn't existed, was not in existence in other school districts, but it's legislatively required now that we have it, which is possible.
Any comments from the policy committee, anything to take on that?
This would be one of my interests very much.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so there is no action on that tonight either, so we'll move on to eleven point seven, the ratification of the administrators' union contract.
So earlier this evening, the board had a chance to review and discuss the tentative agreement reached through the negotiations process between the Board of Education, the negotiation subcommittee, and the RAN Administrators Association, the agreement has been ratified by the administrators' group and I recommend that they will do the same.
Uh, okay, so just to ask, is there an opportunity, would somebody entertain a motion to approve the administrators' union contract? Eric, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Uh, is there any discussion? Yeah, I just want to make sure to open up the opportunity, I'll get the evil eye from Sue. Hearing none, none, the, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries, you may have a seat. Which brings us to item eleven point eight, the overview of items likely to impact the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four FYI budget, enclosure eleven point eight.
Just going to give Eric a moment to pull it up on the screen through those, telling me virtually. So I'll just say, I'll start by saying that this has been an educational experience, going through the budget process in my first years as superintendent, and I want to thank Eva, who has been incredibly patient with a myriad of, of really, really, a couple of stupid questions that I've asked her on almost the other days, this is for the past several months. I also want to thank the administrative team for, for showing the same patience on many, many occasions and spending lots of time with me discussing the budget, the budget process. You know, this is obviously a, a big undertaking and, and in my first year superintendent, I want to make sure that I do it to the, to the standard that the board is used to and that the, the district deserves. You go to the next slide, please. So, just to set a context, we do have a Board of Education policy that identifies that at this meeting, the, the board and superintendent shall, will, will go over some budget, certain things that are going to impact the budget and discuss any new programs or items that to be included in the, to be included in the proposed budget, as well as items that may be deleted. I won't read it word for word, Eric, you go to the next slide, Eric, please, this just provides the, the mission, the vision, and period of actions identified in our current strategic plan. Go to the next slide, please. Similarly, these are just the commitments as a part of the strategic plan, I would be, I would read this, people, I find that's, it's open when that happens. Give you a moment. Eric, can you go to the next slide for me, please? This, I, I will just take a moment to highlight, so this, I, I wanted to provide our enrollment projections, kind of where we were historically, and I didn't do a, a significant look back, I would anticipate sharing a deeper look back when I do the presentation to board members in January, but I wanted to provide people with the context of where it was, where we were last October of twenty twenty-one, where our enrollment, October twenty, October first of each year is a big enrollment number, it's, it's when the state, we provide the state with our enrollment, enrollment numbers for the current year, we're at one thousand two hundred and two students in October of twenty twenty-one, and in October first of twenty twenty-two, we were down to one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight students. I, I, I provide this context to people because I know that there is a, a longstanding narrative that RAN has declining enrollment and I'm certainly not arguing that that is not accurate. I just think it's important for the public to know that that enrollment is not a significant drop-off in our current, in our current plan. I also want to point out the enrollment projections, these are provided to us annually by NASDAQ, and it's, I think it's important to note that while we will continue to see declining enrollment over the next few years, the upswing does start back up or is projected to, to, to start back up in twenty, in the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight school year. We get as low as one thousand and seventy students and then the projections start to swing back up and you can see that over the course of the next five to six years, it goes back to numbers where we, where we'll be higher than where we are currently. And I just think that's a really important context for us to keep in mind as we go through this budget process and also future budget processes over the next several years. Next slide from there. So, just, the budget timeline to date, again, Eva's just been fantastic, you know, she, she's done a lot to develop the timeline, the timeline that we follow this year is, it's, it's, I know that I'm coming to you in it in the middle of December, but please understand that our, our, our staff, our department coordinators, our building administration, our district administration, special education, have been living this budget for the past several months, and, and, and certainly something that has been on the forefront of their minds. We started this process back in October when the, when the budget manual is given out at a, a fact meeting, which is our department coordinators or administrative team, we review the process and go through that process. One of the things that I did hear when I came in, new to the district, is, was that the, the process was the department coordinators would sit and collaborate with building administration, where they would discuss the needs and wants of individual departments, and I think that's an excellent process, the one thing that I wanted to do was I actually wanted, not, not in an effort to micromanage, but just to be as educated as I can about the process, I wanted to be a part of those meetings and conversations, and so I had those meetings with the building administration, the department coordinators, scheduled with Eva and I, and we sat down as a collective group and I got to hear from each one of the department coordinators, so I, I, I was hearing firsthand what their needs, what their wants, what their desires were for, for their particular department. At, at a similar time period, I was having conversations with athletic director, the director of people's services, the director of technology and communication, our facilities director, to review their department budget and discuss needs, et cetera. We worked on updating the personnel budget, and then we got us to the point where we are, to the point where we are right now, which is sharing new or major items to be considered for proposed budgets, so that's currently where we are, that's what we've done to date. Moving forward, we do have some next steps, this coming Wednesday, we do have a facility subcommittee meeting so that we can review and prioritize the capital budget for, for next year. I anticipate that the finance subcommittee meeting, I'm hoping we can work to maybe have that be a joint finance slash, I said. have that be a joint finance slash facility subcommittee meeting so that we can have a, a lengthy conversation between the facility subcommittee and the finance subcommittee and discuss, uh, the needs of the capital budget. On the twenty third, of course, I'll present the, uh, the, the administrative budgets to the board of education. For the, the next three items in the budget, uh, timeline are to be determined. I know historically that there's been, uh, a budget workshop done, obviously for, for the RAM budget workshop kind of covers the Hebrew needs or, or covers presenting to the Hebrew community. My understanding is there's historically been a, a, we take the show on the road, and I think that's been done up until the pandemic hit. And, and I, I wanted to get an understanding from the board, what the desire of the board was, because I think last year that those meetings were, were done virtually and people were allowed to, um, they were healthier and people were allowed to virtually join those meetings. And I just need to get some direction from the board as far as do we want to do those meetings virtually again this year? Kind of what we were talking about earlier with regards to, you know, if you could do it digitally, is that something that we're desiring to be doing? Or is it something that we want to actually say, no, we want to, again, go back to the towns because we have to have some scheduling conversations, which I'm happy to, to, to organize and facilitate, but I just need to get some direction from you on that. Again, we have our, our date identified for our public budget hearing in, in region eight, special meeting to set the budget amount for referendum. Annual budget meeting for about, per policy, thirty one twenty one is going to be on May first, and then the budget referendum will be, will be May second. So priorities and budget planning. You know, I, I, when we looked at the prioritization of, of needs for the district, we, we thought it was important to make sure that we support academic and social learning, social emotional learning needs of all students, to maintain a program of studies with a variety of course offerings and career pathways and ensure RAM graduates are college and career ready upon graduation. That's certainly something that obviously really resonated with me, particularly after the presentation that I heard today from our real environment. Ensure curriculum and instruction utilized in the district are current and aligned with best practices. You'll see, uh, and if you had a chance to look through this PowerPoint already, it would, uh, when you receive the agenda, you'll see that, um, I, I'm recommending that a new position be created. My biggest concern is that without having somebody in the district with a very, uh, with a very specific and hyper focus on curriculum and instruction practices, um, that students will have a different experience here at RAM and, and differently, not a positive way in, in the sense of, I, I, I just think that a district that offers the program of studies that we offer, I think it's really important that we have somebody focusing on curriculum and instruction. We have that with the department coordinators, but our department coordinators also are teaching a, a, a portion of their day. And, and so we'll, we'll talk more about that, but I think that's critically important for the districts. Another priority is to improve or maintain facilities and grounds. And last, certainly not leave some chair safe and secure school environment for student staff and community. As everyone knows, there's, there's a lot that is factoring. There's, there are many factors that are influencing the budget for twenty three, twenty four. This is something that I think that we're going to see in budgets, uh, local and municipal in school, district budgets across the state as, as other districts during the budget season. Just inflation in general. Uh, I think we're at seven and a half, we were talking about this earlier, we're around seven and a half percent inflation. And that's, that's, that's going to have a significant impact. You have things of anticipated increase for diesel fuel costs. You have anticipated increase for ever source delivery fees. I'm sure that many of you are tracking that in the news and some of them are looking to double their, uh, charges for delivery fees. Not the fee for the electricity itself, but just, just the delivery fees. We're, we're looking at anticipated increases, uh, for natural gas. And we know that we're, we already have, uh, increases for our software prices that we utilize in the district that are on a basis that we really need to be a functioning district. Unfunded legislative mandates. It's not uncommon that we get those. They, they, um, they're coming with a fairly hefty price tag. They're good things. Certainly don't want to negate their importance. They're, they're, they're good that we have them, but they're, they, they have an impact on the budget. Aging equipment and technology. It's one of the amazing things about coming into this district is how often I'm, people are, oh my gosh, that building is so beautiful, that building is so beautiful, it's such a beautiful facility, it's so beautiful. And, you know, it's, oh, it's so brand new. And I think that there's a lot of people that think of this building as brand new, when in fact it's, it's getting on twenty years old. And when you get on twenty years old, there's aging equipment and technology. We know that, uh, capital budget is going to include things like, you know, boilers, chillers, um, roofing projects, cooling towers, thank you. But, but those types of things are, are, are obviously significantly big ticket items that are going to fall under capital, but there are also things that fall under just a regular operating budget. And I just highlight two of them. It sounds so silly as it, but a baby grand piano. We, the baby, the piano, the grand piano that we utilize, it's normally in this building or, or in this, it's, it's normally just going to get moved out from meetings. I think when it was purchased for the building twenty some odd years ago, I think it was already, it had been used for ten years. They, they actually got it used. So it's a, we're talking about a thirty five year old piano that is aging and warping, starting to show signs. So things like that. And then we have, you know, things like smart board technology, which again is, is being, is becoming outdated rather quickly. And so we're looking to replace things like that with touch screen. So those are just a couple of examples of aging equipment and technology. Special education certainly is always a driver of a budget, um, and, and, and it's no different for, for next school year. We do know, sharing the good news, we, we're looking and anticipating at a decrease in magnet agri science tuition due to student transfers or returning to RAM, which is fantastic. We love it. Want our students to come back, and we love it even more when our students are returned and has the opportunity to save some, some funding. Decreasing and outplacement tuition and professional services for students exiting the district. But we do, we are looking at an increase in trans, increase in transportation cost due to driver shortage in diesel. That's, the, the driver shortage is as real as the teacher shortage or the employee shortage in just about every business and industry. And so what we're finding we have to do is transportation services that we typically utilize, whether it's special education or whether it's athletics, we're having to use people that we've never used before because we call one company and say, we can't help you. So we have to go to companies that are more costly, but we don't have a choice in matter because if we don't utilize those companies, we're not going to be able to transport our students to school on a daily basis or athletic events, and that's just not something we can do. So those are things that obviously we're contending with. Health insurance. I will tell you that, uh, it said, what your PowerPoint shows is currently budgeted for a six percent increase. The day after this went to publish and was pushed out to everybody, um, the insurance consortium met and it was actually identified to move to a five percent increase. That still could go down and, and likely will go down. Uh, this, this current year that we'll work under is a zero percent increase. So, so, but there's still a, a little bit of trepidation with the insurance consortium to move lower, um, because it's easier to explain to taxpayers the ability to move down as opposed to, hey, we budgeted for one percent, but guess what, it's really going to be three or four. So where we are right now is because of the consortium at five percent. And just general overall contractual increases certainly have an impact. So those are the factors influencing the budget for next year. Proposed changes for, um, uh, our current school year to next school year for the budget. Uh, we have some grant funded programs or positions, uh, that we are anticipating moving into the operating budget for next year. So we've run summer school, uh, summer school or credit recovery program for middle school and high school students over the past couple of summers. That has been covered, um, by grant funding. That grant funding is no longer going to be available in districts and we're anticipating we do that into the operating budget because the administration is still in support of running those programs for students. We have an LPN that we hired, I think, two years ago, uh, who has been under a special education grant that Christine manages, but, uh, that obviously takes away opportunities for us to utilize that funding in a different way. So the idea would be to move that LPN into our operating budget as well. There's a, currently in our budget, there is a, a family consumer science position that is, that is not been, not been filled. I know that there was a lot of conversation around this position with the board. It was a position that was advertised, it was posted, it was, it was, uh, basically it was not, it will be filled and therefore the current school year doesn't have that position. I, I envision the same challenges moving into next year if we try to fill that position, particularly a, 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 a part time position. And so to me, it just makes the most sense to say, hey, listen, it's just going to be something we're going to, we're going to move away from. With that being said, that FTE could be utilized for what I was talking about earlier, which is the addition of an instructional coach slash curriculum coordinator. It's a position that is, uh, titled many different things in different districts. It depends on who it is that you talk to, um, or the district that you're in. Several years ago, this district had, uh, somebody who was a, a director of curriculum and instruction. It was an administrative level position. I'm not looking for an administrative level position. Do I think there'd be benefits to a twelve month administrative position? Absolutely. But I think that this is a good first step for us to make to getting somebody back into the district to be focused on the idea of improving our instructional practices, working directly with our teachers, our department coordinators, with our, uh, building, uh, building leadership, to talk about what we need to do to stay current and on that approach to utilization and instructional practices. The position would also have a responsibility of, of having a level of curriculum oversight, working very closely with department coordinators, building administration, to make sure that our, our, our curriculum is staying current. Because if we don't have somebody with that focus to, to, to make sure it's staying current, then it's just going to become obsolete, and that's not good for anyone, most importantly, students. The, the, again, that position I, I would see would be, uh, again, a, 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 a full time teaching position and similar to the structure of our department coordinators. There's a stipend associated with it, which would bring on additional, uh, additional responsibilities outside of the, the contractual workday, as well as some summertime, uh, some summertime work, where they'd work with, uh, with the public coordinators as well. So those are the proposed changes from this year to next year. And just real briefly, I, on the next slide, Eric, um, if, as I said, the facility subcommittee and, and myself, Eva, Eva, Michael, the building administration, we're going to meet on, uh, Wednesday of this week. We're going to have a virtual meeting. I certainly sent a link to everybody in the board if you can get to attend, it'd be great. Where, uh, to, to discuss and prioritize the capital, uh, budget for next year. Our current capital budget is five hundred and four thousand dollars and six hundred and nineteen, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Our identified capital needs per the tenure plan are currently hovering around two point seven million dollars. So we've got a lot of talking to do. So our, our, um, capital non recurrent balance as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty two is just short of six hundred thousand dollars. These are the funds that the board may recall have been specifically earmarked for, um, funding to help improve our athletic fields. And, uh, again, that's another thing that's going to be discussed at our facility subcommittee meeting as well. And our capital improvement plan balance as of November thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty two is, is just, uh, just above twenty thousand dollars. And that money would be available at the closeout of the locker room HVAC project. That money would go into capital.
Actually, it's taken this capital, but we've been, you have to allocate it, or the board chooses to allocate it.
Thank you. So she does that for me like all day, all day. So, and then the, finally, just regarding the capital improvement, uh, funds is the specific amount of the twenty one, twenty two surplus funds from the operating budget is anticipated to be done after the final audit in February. That concludes my presentation, and I can certainly try to answer any questions the board members may have. Can we go on? Questions? Personally?
To each your question. Model and over, I'm staging here and then we virtually were smiting it. The touch view screens to replace the smart boards, are we doing that all at once? Or are we just replacing the ones that were broken?
That's, uh, so we, I believe that we've used.
Or not broken, but outdated.
So, so initially, we purchased one, I think, two years ago to, to try the new technology. And, and we used operating funds, but, and so you see one right over there. So we used operating funds to purchase that one just to, as a test pilot. I believe then the following year, which was last year, we were able to purchase twelve of them through grant funding. We're anticipating, we're certainly applying for grant funding to try to pick up the cost of another twelve to fifteen, depending on how much grant funding is made available to the district. So, uh, hopefully that's going to be more where we purchase through the grant, but we're still looking at being short by a, a fairly substantial amount. And we, we're looking at needing some local operating budget in order to move us to the end quicker. Now, the board could ultimately decide, hey, we'd rather do this piecemeal and do it a little bit over time incrementally. And that's certainly something that the board can discuss and give us some guidance and direction on. I will tell you that our director of technology would love to just rip the bandaid off and move in that direction because he thinks the technology, and I certainly can understand this, is better for students and better for staff.
Are they, um, how much are they? Seven thousand dollars?
No.
They're shy of two thousand.
Oh, two thousand dollars.
The size that is here.
And, um, the, the white stand on that.
I don't know that, but I can check.
And then the, the instructional coach, that's not a twelve month condition right now. Is that valid, right? I'm going to draw my questions right now.
Eric?
Is there, um, do you have any educated guess at this point, uh, the percentage of operating budget?
I would be very, really, uh, giving an educated guess about that because once I get it, and I don't, it's not going to dismiss it with a question. Once I put an educated guess out there, that becomes the number and, and, and we're still trying to figure some stuff out.
Okay. For, um, I think if you put, seeing, that's what it would be, the rest of the town administration or the board is looking for, for funding, I think, budget workshops, for, for, for funding. And if that didn't look up, they'd be shocked if I expected a building, if they wanted to all, I'm certain they're willing to, 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 to,
And we also went to Andover, and pushed in a little, um, library, I don't even know what it's called, the elementary school, we pushed them there just to go over budget items. So I agree how going to all of our three towns to present the entire budget is extremely important, but to go over, you know, just budget topics and have our meeting at every location, I don't see why we all can hear anything about, you know, how like going to the board of finance meetings is extremely important.
Sure, fair enough. It's, it's something that you had to promote, you also teach, teach.
Right, yeah.
I'm with you.
So that's, that, that's the difference, and I don't know if anyone here even remembers us doing that, because no one has been.
Yeah, I think that, that's, I think that's good to get the clarity around this, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding of it is, um, a couple of departments, I'm kinda making this up, a couple of departments might go to Andover and present just, you know, uh, athletics and special education. And then a couple of other departments would go to Heber, or, I'm sorry, not Heber, go, go to Marlborough and present, uh, social studies, facilities, and science. And it, it just seemed disjointed to me because.
I never liked it.
So, so I, I, but Sue, what I'm hearing you say is, and I agree with, I think it's important for each town to get a live presentation of what our district budget is, and then afford everybody an opportunity to have a, a, a single meeting that could be held here, where all of the different departments and coordinators present their particular budget. Because that way, everybody's getting the same message versus Andover's getting one message, Marlborough's getting another, and a complete message.
Yeah, and it's not a single meeting, those are done on multiple.
Sure, sure.
You would be here until twelve o'clock.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, so, yeah, I mean, I can work to, to schedule it, and I can communicate with the, uh, finance community chairs and.
Yeah, and that, that also involves the, uh, the officials from three towns to commission.
Yeah.
You know, you know, a lot of it.
So the, the sooner the better to get those budget states out, part of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, and, Adam?
Um, do we have a history on, like, what did we do as a matter of process when the budget passed and when the budget failed? Like, I know everybody's new here, but we're, you know, exactly what Sue's saying, certainly, we've done these smaller meetings, you go, um, and present to each of the, each of the communities. You know, I'm always gonna go back to, to what's the consequence, like, you wanna get your story out, and you wanna tell people why things are changing, and there needs to be, to me, some transparency, you know, there's, again, we should do that, but, um, I think having a plan like that will help support the budget when it does come across well and, and, and the voting. Because I think a lot of people just have a knee-jerk reaction, oh, you increased the budget, I'm just gonna know on that. No, 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 you gotta, you have to really figure out how to communicate why is it increasing. So it wasn't really a question of, just that to know our history on how we've done this and was it successful, and.
Certainly, certainly could have heard some of the history and asking, thank Scott, you know, on his yacht, wherever he is, playing golf, wherever he is.
There, there is a budget flyer that's very helpful.
Yes.
To one page, there's a flyer, and then share the stuff, and then you can share it, you know, on social media, to Marlborough, even on our Facebook pages, because I know we have, and I don't, I don't know if we use it intensely, but it's important to share that budget flyer. In the past, we have done, um, a workshop where the public can join and we can answer questions, very different than the comments, not well attended at all. Um, but I am not for one to just drop something just because it wasn't well attended before, um, especially if our budget is going to be higher than the normal. Um, but a workshop allows us to communicate to the community if they, uh, and even have conversations back and forth, obviously Colin doing the majority of the talking and answering the questions on mic. Um, so that was another, you know, thing that we've done in the past, um, maybe worth looking into if the budget's willing to be a little higher. And definitely going to the three towns, the board of finance, Colin, going, and, you know, myself, the Marlborough, the Marlborough representatives going to Colin, Marlborough, Heber, and Heber, and Andover, and Andover. I think that's also extremely important, because the board of finances, they can't tell us, go, cut twenty thousand dollars like they can, they do locally to us. Uh, they can send us a letter strongly recommending that we lower it, and that has happened in the past. But that's all the board of finance, you know, really getting in front of them, and then if it fails, it's a nightmare. It's, it's truly a nightmare. We all have to come back to the table, how he presents items that, uh, his suggestions under we can cut, um, at that point. Because when it fails, we really don't know why, like, only the ch- chatter, but it's not like you write on the ballot, I mean, it's not passable list because of it, so it's very hard to decipher, um, and. But community members will, will start coming out, and they'll start vocalizing some items once they're here at the bottom line, they'll, Eric, please, be a little bit in the audience, and then we have to really double our thought and, um, ensure that we get it to pass. Were the workshops available on, on, on Tuesday? Um, online wasn't available back in the day?
Oh, we just have.
Was that, you, you can't be.
We did, I think we did something like that last year, but it wasn't, I think to Sue's point, it was, it wasn't well defended.
Obviously.
But I'm not sure it was well promoted either, to be truthful about it.
Unfortunately. So parents can't really pass. Yeah.
One thing I'll mention about the one-page sheet is that, uh, it reminds people that there's a vote count, and one of the continuing challenges that these budget votes are done in very often, trying to be here at any second. It's easy for people to forget it's even there, and there'll be a certain family of no votes that will always show up, and certain, you know, yes votes that'll show up. And anything that we can do to communicate to people that, uh, that, that there is a vote count, and, and recommend that they vote us, I think, that's, that's the most.
Really, that get out the vote game kinda comes down to what Sue was saying, it's the Marlborough folks really need to motivate the Marlborough folks, the Andover folks similarly, and the Heber people, yes, community.
The school cannot post something on their Facebook page and say, vote yes. The school cannot do that. The school can just provide the information. I normally don't say vote yes either, I normally just post, here's a flyer, if you have any questions, I'm, no, please remember to vote. But th- those are some of the things that we've done in the past. I mean, I'm thinking maybe the workshop is something we should consider, um, especially for the young, I don't know.
I think.
And if you do it hybridly, like you said, it gives, you know, we're here, some votes are here, hybrid, it gives the parents an opportunity to not kind of come out.
And no parents would listen, like, on the side of the road as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The only other thing I would say is that, to, uh, Colin's point about, and, and, I think, to your point too, is that, kinda the disjointed presentation in the past, I feel like if we frame this properly where we're doing, you know, a series of presentations where we break down, but people have an opportunity to get a full face of what we're also experiencing. Um, and I think, uh, that bodes a little better than it just didn't justify or without the workshop or.
If, in doing the workshop before, we obviously vote on the budget, right?
Yeah.
Because if we do it after.
So we can incorporate some feedback, you know?
Right, it defeats the purpose, people will feel like, well, why, why waste my opinion down, we already voted on it.
There's not a lot of working going on.
Does the flyer go in the release?
Uh, it does not go in the release, it's a front and back flyer.
Might be important to frame some, some of the most critical talking points to, to.
We, we could put a, a press release, I guess, in the release, and a link to the flyer, and they could see the link, and go out to the flyer that's on the website, because I'm sure on the website, the flyer will be there. Making it easy, accessible on the website, so, I know Marlborough, I talked to the superintendent, and when you sign into the page, the flyer immediately pops up in your face. And I think we do that here.
Where is it?
You know, so, so you can't miss it, basically. Go, and it pops up, and you have to exit out if you don't wanna see the flyer.
All right.
But, is it possible to share the capital improved items, flyers, with, uh, the subcommittee? Yes. Or the entire one? Yes.
So I'll, I'll circle back with, um, with Colin about the, kinda the proposals for how we schedule this out, lay this out, and, and work to try and get us some scheduling options out, everybody's quick as you can.
And one more thing, just to add, we normally have, um, a cutoff date, so say our meeting is on Monday, it's right, you want to decide another day. Um, you would tell us, well, if you have questions, can you send them to me Wednesday before the meeting? So we, the board would give you all the questions, and you would have all the answers for that meeting, so that you come prepared and have the answers. So that was another thing that worked very well, because I know I have lots of questions most of the time, so I would rather send them to you so you have answers instead of say, oh, I'll get that.
Absolutely.
So you pick that day.
Okay. There's nothing else? I don't think there's any other activity. I'm sorry, Carrie, I keep forgetting you're up there. Did, uh, do you have any questions?
Sorry, I didn't know my hand was raised.
No, it wasn't, I'm just checking, just making sure we include you in the opportunity to ask any questions.
Oh, no, I'm also taking it.
All right. That was a good discussion. Painful, but a good one. Um, all right, so I'll move this on to, uh, eleven point nine, the financials.
Okay, so eleven point nine G A P A K E T has, um, the net projected total payroll position of two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. That's approximately six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars less than recorded in November, I think, in November, in twenty twenty. Um, the operating fund, you'll know, is having some staff turnover, so you're seeing some savings there. We've also had a slight uptick in, um, getting substitute teachers and advocates, which is a positive thing. Um, and our magnet school tuitions were still being reviewed because there seems to be a delay in getting some of the invoices from our credit partners. The capital improvement fund, we're focusing on the retention fund, retention fund, unfortunately, we need an additional review. Um, that is at no additional cost to the district. Once that is completed, we're gonna have to sort of go and apply for the wetlands, um, commission, and to make sure that the project review, that we have the plans reviewed for the end of December, so we're almost here. The irrigation wall replacement has been approved by the planning committee. The contractor has concluded clearing out of the underground tank, we will call absolutely terminals. And they confirm the integrity of all existing wiring, and the next steps will be to begin removal of the existing load and filling of the new pump chute tank place in January. Positive news for the F amount recurring funds, the town of Heber received some questions from the state indicating that the DOT project is being hopefully processed for closure from their standpoint, but I haven't seen it in final confirmation. Pupil Services is doing a great job of, um, monitoring their movements with their students, and covering anything new or releasing any funds that are not being utilized for that student. Are there any questions, Harry, in the board? Okay, Carrie, and moving to eleven point nine B. This is gonna require some action from the Board of Education. So basically, the IRS, we have flexible spending accounts, so every employer from the IRS is allowed to have places where, um, employees can put free tax dollars in, either for out-of-pocket health costs or daycare, daycare costs. Um, in this situation, the IRS has increased the limit for, uh, employees to be able to contribute for calendar year twenty twenty-three to three thousand fifty dollars, for the current amount of which is two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. We work with progressive benefits, that, uh, helps us monitor the flexible spending accounts on our behalf. Um, and in order for us to be able to offer the higher increased, higher ex limit to our employees, um, the Board of Education has to, um, put that page very high, um, of the document. And follow the resolution and allow for, um, District Act America to sign off on, on our behalf. Um, if you, as ourselves, we're trying to increase the, um, that, that.
So, just some fairness, the, the bottom line is we're just giving them the opportunity to put more, so there's really no reason not to do this, would I agree with that?
Yeah. It's just one of those fine lines.
Okay. So if that's the case at this point, is it appropriate then paying the motion for that? All right, so is there a motion, uh, to, um, increase the amount, uh, employees are allowed to contribute, uh, to their flexible spending accounts from the current limit of twenty-eight fifty to the new limit of thirty, uh, three thousand fifty in twenty twenty-three? Eric, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Uh, uh.
Any opposed? None, that motion carries unanimously. Does that cover your bill?
So now we're on to eleven point nine C, and this is the Pupil Service monthly report for, um, ending November. So we're still on track for, um, and we have communicated with families to let them know that our free meals will be ending on January tenth, and, um, meals will be paid us on January eleventh. Um, we've also received the money for our second allotment of the supply chain grant, so, um, we've received twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars in aid, three cents. And if you go back to page two of the packet, you'll notice that, um, because of that, and because of how we're tracking, um, we actually have a net eight hundred and six thousand five dollars in good debt, that's the monthly. Are there any questions that I can hear from the board?
We're gonna make it to the finished line of the tenth with the group one?
Yeah, that'll be soon.
Okay. Hate to have to go back and communicate something differently. Any other questions?
So eleven point, I believe the student activity reports for our high school and middle school are in balance with the bank accounts, so there are three professional, those counts.
That's a good thing.
Always a good thing to remember. Eleven point nine E is the short-term investment fund, and as requested in this month's report, I actually went on the website, so I didn't have to do the calculation. Um, they do a lovely job of providing all that information, so, um, I downloaded that and included that as part of the packet. Um, and as you can see, for the month of October, we reinvested our dividend of one thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Are there any questions that the board may have on that?
So where does that put us for our capital, the ten-year capital plan? Now we're two million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand?
Right.
Versus seventy thousand? Great.
Okay, eleven point nine P A P, we have the proposed funding transfer to allow for us, now that the board has entered into contract peace term, um, to allow us to pay for the strategic plan. Um, and the cost is seventeen thousand dollars. I included all of that in your packet, so I'm proposing to take money from the unallocated personnel line that is, um, that I reported on, that there's money available, and put it into the system-wide Board of Education first, professional technical services, so that it's not going to be the work for us.
You mean a motion to that?
Indeed.
So, uh, any questions? So go ahead and throw out a motion, so, uh, is there a motion to, uh, move seventeen thousand from the unallocated personnel fund to the, uh, to the.
System-wise.
System-wide Board of Education Purchase Professional Tech Services Fund? Is there a second? Eric, thank you. Is there any discussion? We did. Hearing none, I have a voice vote, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Um, which moves us to the committee reports. Right?
Yeah.
So when we go around the room, I know there's been some committees that have not just rely on the committee members to give us some feedback, so facilities, safety and transportation.
We need a Wednesday at the speech, six o'clock virtually, discussion of the proposed proposal from Tom Roman Associates on the three sixteen field, which is the entire length of the field. And the other most important portion of that discussion would include those items to be under consideration for the capital.
I said, what, what did we? We've had this, this capital budget plan has been around for how long?
Twenty-five years.
Yeah. So, and I know it's a, it's a ten-year plan, I follow, right? Is there any discussion amongst the facility about potentially revisiting the items on that or the prioritization?
Yes, it's something that we talked about with Mike in the past. Especially with some sizable projects.
Yeah, the other thing is I hate for us to be, I mean, conditions change, so something could become more priority, some maybe, you know, fall to the less priority. So I just hate for us to continue and work on that, especially since we're sort of sparingly allocating money that took our long time to gather, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, all right, anyway, so that was something that I know when I first came into the board was a couple of the previous board members who've since rotated out, super high priority to maintain that ten-year plan, but also keep up the date, so. Okay, anything else, any questions for the, for the facilities? Hearing none?
I'm just saying, we're fine. Capital improvement. We're assuming. We do have a nice community here, and he's highly interested in all of here. I think we're all certain, fire department, you know, it's another piece of progress coming right up. I think it's great.
And look, I mean, it's a lot of work, so I mean, obviously we've got to prioritize the, so we've, we've got a lot of things going on over there too, so.
Yeah, it's not a committee work, it's higher management.
Right.
So it's a topic for discussion, we'll leave off of it, bring it back to the board.
Yeah. Okay. Anything for finance and audit compliance and insurance? Finance?
We, we discussed the strategic finance. And also the work at Eastcon.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for finance? Negotiations? That's what we're got, right? All right, good. Well, then thank you, everybody, for hard work, and that without going into the board details, it was clearly a negotiation from both sides. And so that's a good, good result. Policy. Carrie, any for policy? Please do.
Yeah, we've run over three policies that I listed. Two of them brought up during the business section at the end of. And I scheduled meetings on Tuesday, January fifteenth.
Okay. Yeah, that's great, thank you very much. Any questions for policy? Okay, go to program and communication. I don't think we've had, yeah, we haven't had that. So facilitators. So Dr. Benson Clark has moved on, and so we have vacancies for both our Eastcon rep and our CAVE rep. So I didn't really frankly want to appoint a new rep as the previous chair because we were gonna have elections in two weeks. So I didn't specifically didn't, you know, provide an appointment to that. With all of the committees and to include the facilitators for those two entities, what I would like to do is similar to what we did last year, is just, you know, poll the field, what are your interests in as far as, as far as committees or subcommittees are concerned? Give me your feedback and then hopefully we can kind of work out something where it entertains everybody's ideal circumstance and then certainly talk to everybody if that's not the case. But we would throw the Eastcon and the CAVE positions into that mix. Again, definitely get your feedback, anybody that's interested in participating in that part or serving as our rep or reps for that, for those two entities would also be helpful. And I'll, I'll send out an email that, that gives everybody kind of what I'd like to get from you for feedback and try to get that done pretty quickly. And then once we establish who those, those subcommittee leaders are, our subcommittee members are, it'll be incumbent upon you as part of your first meeting to identify who's gonna be, serves as your lead for the year. Believe it or not, there's a pretty explicit and extensive policy that explains how you go about that. So is there anything from Eastcon or CAVE that anybody felt like they wanted to share? I know that occasionally people participate and stuff that not everybody goes to.
Do you not understand what the obligation is?
There's really no obligation. We use CAVE as an opportunity to, you know, they're a resource, the Connecticut Association of Ports of Education. They're, they're actually a great information resource. I mean, I've certainly gone to a couple of their, their offerings. They, sometimes it's themed, sometimes it's just a general annual meeting where they present a lot of information, they bring in some pretty good speakers. And I rely on them for just rudimentary stuff like, like I think Holly resorted to make sure that we have the process for the board election, officers' election correct today. And something for our executive committee, I got some feedback from Nick Caruso to specifically make sure how, how it suits the board, puts the CAVE recommendation for how to frame that, that, that discussion that we'll move forward to. So that's really all it is. It's not really any requirement, I think, and it's the same thing with Eastcon, we, you know, we, we have this sort of, we send a liaison or a representative to it to provide both our feedback and also kind of bring back what, what they are discussing or things that are relevant that, you know, impact us.
I think with the Eastcon, Dr. Benson Clark served on, and forgive me, I don't know the technical name, but they're essentially what equates to their board, right? So, so they have a, they have an organizational framework that's not like a Board of Education where it's, the members of their board are from districts that are within the rest. And so Dr. Benson Clark was on our Board of Education, which is also on their executive board or board, whatever it's called. And so she would attend board meetings much the same way that board members would attend these meetings and, you know, act in a similar manner. So, so there is a little bit of a difference with that. So there's a, probably a bit more of a formal time commitment with Eastcon. Eric Latulis, the Eastcon Executive Director, reached out to me in the wake of Dr. Benson Clark's resignation, and I shared this with, with Mike and said, you know, we've got a longstanding history of having active involvement of somebody from the real board of that and we'd love to continue that as possible.
Yeah, they specifically reached out to ask us that somebody participates on. Anyway, so, well, like I said, I'll, I'll throw that out to everybody, gather everybody's interest and then try to circle back with everybody and do the best we can to try and achieve the best circumstance for everybody.
It would be helpful to know what night, time, time commitment and all of that.
Yeah.
That would be great. I didn't know that that was such a whole thing. CAVE, we get all of the CAVE emails, so from my place, there's much to do with CAVE. I reach out to CAVE a lot too for questions. We all could reach out to CAVE service, but Nick Caruso is awesome. They all are awesome there, but Eastcon is sitting, that's a time commitment.
I can get that specific.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a bunch of offerings in the vision budget within the school to pay for that, so if, you know, you see things in the CAVE that you'd like to participate in, you just have to communicate with Colin and he'll work with the staff to make sure that they preserve those spot for you and all that kind of thing, so.
CAVE offers a new board member meeting too. That I don't know if you've ever attended, but it's, it's very good. I've attended years ago. Might be worth looking into. I think now is right around the time they offer it, is new board members come in as a new member.
Yep. All right. Why don't we move on to item thirteen, public comment? So Miss Carrie would be in the second round of reading. He were handover marble community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the freedom of information after discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. At this time, is there anybody present that would like to present, please?
I don't know how you all feel, but I'm exhausted. I'm not doing any good. One part of my causes as a citizen, I can't really call myself, I have made decisions that move on, moving this forward. I have moved into a contract negotiation with another years back, which I bought that in a hundred thousand dollars, which was the last big part. And you brought that up, knowing that you had a discussion on the negotiation, the board of the negotiation. What I learned tonight is that it was a negotiation and that the board approved it. As a citizen, I have no idea what else is happening. Will that negotiation have any kind of under factors influence influencing the budget on your contractual obligations? Will this negotiation, this approval have an influence on this year's budget? Next year's budget, or the past, that's the question. I said earlier that this is a hard doubt, a real hard one. As a citizen, I want to let you know that I am totally uninformed as to the decisions that we made. If there was any financial implication, which wasn't just clear, they would know that next year has contractual obligations. So I'm an uninformed citizen. I don't have any say in that. I don't believe that I should. The one thing that this board just did is they gave up, they have the ability to discuss contractual obligations in the budget that's on the next. When we talked in this time, we were implementing our facility, we put the budget in our published system. We mentioned inflation, we mentioned pressure, and we had all three towns. We talked about the boards, I'm trying to remember. We, and we will be putting greater leverage into the rights of these new chapters of the minor part of the budget, I think, so. Whereas contractual obligations, I can greatly drill the question. And over a decade now, I left these years in discussion, helping board on how we can be established as citizens. I don't say it's wrong, which is kind of like this. With that in mind, I wonder if I can ask a question. Why as a citizen, will this board present this negotiation product to this house? Or this negotiation, you posted in the town, last year, the silver part of the company? And then that's a question. And if this didn't post it, will the board select an avenue to say the objection? And I researched things over there and realized that the fact that the reason I led to the past negotiations, I understood that this negotiation, you'll be kind of posted, or any negotiations, posted. And that probably ten, it comes to the skeleton. And select them ten, they choose. I'm not objecting to anything that's done now, even if I don't understand. I don't understand what responsibility I have as a citizen, give me back, what other things need, I should give me back to as a citizen. So that's a question, and if you have any other time, you don't just say that, you know, will we be posting negotiation pie that's just approved at this point?
I apologize, but we can engage in a discussion or question and answer period as part of the public comment, that's part of the previous piece. But, but you, we understand, we, we gathered your feedback.
Okay, but it was on the agenda, so I think we'll, okay, I should stop it. And again, that's the case. But if this didn't post it, I'm wondering if this board, I think, knew that a public document physically posted, it's open to the public. Anyways, I don't say, I'm tired of the work. I wish I had calories and a meal.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else present for public comment? Please.
Oh, good evening. You can still, I'll explain to him, I don't know. I just want to say it was, it was great to have the speakers here tonight that we had come in, talk about some of the things that we're gonna work on as a district. It's good to know that, teachers will be happy to know that we're moving in a direction and to make things better at Ram. I did want to mention, I was a little disheartened, there's, there's three more reservations tonight. For personal and family reasons, I'm not gonna insinuate any reasons for them leaving, people retired, it's the life cycle of faculty. But I do want to mention them again, just out of respect for, for the years they spent at Ram, Joyce Lockholme has worked forever at Ram, she worked at the high school, middle school, I got to work with her at the middle school, she's one of the most funniest and creative teachers, so we've been lucky to have her for a long time. And I want, she should be recognized for that. Paul Bancroft is exactly the kind of teacher you want to keep in this district, teachers that go out of their way to create new curricula, new programs for students, beyond his, his educational certificates, his professional responsibilities that he had, he's brought that passion into the high school, he's, he's taking kids who didn't know what they wanted to do in their lives and brought them through the CERT program and given them avenues and opportunities that, that they never thought they had. Lastly, I do want to mention Linda Thurber-Lung, she is probably the biggest unsung hero at Ram, she works with some of the most special kids at Ram, some of the most difficult in terms of their special needs, she works tirelessly to make them feel included and welcome and, and just as much as a part of a Ram community as they, as they, they ought to be. She's done that for many years tirelessly and with such grace. She's nothing short of a saint really at Ram. And, and we, when the board makes comments about, you know, we won't be able to replace them, the truth is we won't. And I'd, I'd ask the board to start some conversations about how are we going to start attracting teachers, period, to Ram? There seems to be a shortage of teachers, if you haven't heard, it doesn't seem to be a profession people are willing to stick around or come, I know Ram's had its own troubles filling positions for people that have left in recent years. And I think it would really help the board to start having those conversations now because we will start losing prospective teachers to other districts. Their, their profession itself is changing, what teachers want is changing, the types of districts that they're looking at applying to is changing. And I think it would be helpful if the board really started having some conversations about what can we do to, to start recruiting teachers to Ram? Teachers affect curriculum, programming, we, we've heard from recent graduates today, the fact that you got to hear from recent graduates, they, they talked about their experiences and not just their core classes with all the, all the other electives that they get to take at Ram, and we've done a great job in providing them with such a wide scope of, of education here at Ram, but without teachers, you won't be able to offer those things anymore. That's just the reality of it. If you cannot get teachers here, you, you cannot fill a certification program without somebody with the qualifications that Mr. Bancroft had, and they're just not out there. Finding someone to do the things that Linda Thurber-Lung has done for the past thirty-seven years, it'll be hard just to get somebody into that position and just let alone do the job that she did, there doesn't seem to be people out there that want to come and fill that position. And so I think Ram really needs to look as a community, what do we want to do to try to bring teachers into this, into this community and, and keep it, keep it expanding, programming, curriculum, that all takes teachers for those positions. And as we lose teachers and we can't fill them, that, that, that just shrinks, it gets smaller and smaller, do the scheduling, do the teachers, do the sort of patience. And so I, I think a conversation sooner rather than later is gonna be really important in keeping this district, keeping this district really doing what we're doing right now, that's providing top-notch quality education for all of our kids here in the community. Oh, I, I meant to mention too, Sue was talking about why do we have those meetings in three towns? I, I believe that was, there was some concern from the three communities, the elderly population about being able to get to these meetings, that was in the past, when we used to do the, even the marble budget meetings, I think that was one of the reasons why. I'm not sure if that's the same sentiment where people had, they were trying to get to those meetings, but I know that was one of the reasons we decided to do that. I hope it runs a good holiday. I hope you have a restful time with your family and friends, appreciate the work that you've been doing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present for a public comment? Anyone else present for public comment? Okay, seeing none, anybody online for public comment, please raise your digital hand. Eric will let us know. Okay, hearing none for the digital, the digital hand. Um, move on to informational items, anything from the uh, calendar of events or the uh, four point, fourteen point two, the student in school, out of school suspension report? Yeah, actually, the only thing I did actually, I have one question on fourteen point two, is um, one of the things I guess in my mind, I look at this and I say to myself, I, and it doesn't even need to be necessarily specific to the report, but maybe just feedback, are we trending same, like, has there been a spike or, or some, some feedback, whether or not we, something's changed, we need to, to zone in on that a little bit.
The other report had, you know, here.
Yeah, and some, some, some level of work, sort of, operating in sort of the same zone that we normally are, seeing the same things, or if there's some sort of significant. And again, that could just be some verbal feedback, whatever it is. Uh, any other questions for fourteen point one or fourteen point two? Okay, hearing none, that moves us on to item fifteen, executive session and the discussion of superintendent's evaluation. Uh, entertain a motion to move to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the superintendent's evaluation, further move to invite the superintendent, Paula McAmara, into the executive session at a point that we determined. Thank you. Thank you. Let's do a voice vote, all in favor? Uh, seeing opposed? Hearing none, that board that passes unanimously, and we move into executive session.